Go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, July 12, 2016. And item B, call for a meeting set Tuesday, August 2, 2016, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rule or increased value on property. Motion by Boyle, seconded by Kraft. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, there are two resol-- three resolutions, approving the government-owned property, item E, approving applications for tax exemption on motor vehicles, and item G, not approving applications for tax exemption on motor vehicles.
And if there's no need for executive session, I would include adjournment.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioner Rogers.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, June 14, 2016. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Boyle, seconded by Duda. Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda?
Is this the community comment section?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the Board.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, my name is John Corrigan, 1411 Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102. I'm an attorney with the Firm of Doubt Howard &amp; Corrigan, and we represent the paternal order police lodge number eight in labor management matters. And I think there has been some discussion with the county attorney's office, maybe others, about really some angst that the corrections officers are having that are here today with the dispute resolution procedures currently in place with Douglas County. And I have been representing this particular unit for 17 years. We have contractual language of the grievance procedure, which is kind of an anomaly because it does say that if you have a dispute as grievance is defined under the contract, that it is to go first to the-- through this labor management or a committee of the FOP-8, then to a labor management committee, and ultimately to the director. And then the director makes a decision if the aggrieved employee or the union is not satisfied with that result, then they can take it to the Civil Service Commission. And that really has not been the case with respect to non-disciplinary grievances since 2006 or so, meaning that the Civil Service Commission and ultimately the Douglas County District Courts have decided that the Civil Service Commission did not have jurisdiction to entertain or rule on grievances that rose out of matters that were anything other than disciplinary appeals. So if it's a suspension, a demotion, a termination, Civil Service Commission can exercise jurisdiction. If it's not, they have no jurisdiction to determine the meaning of a contract. And so we are in a process now where the language in the contract is really null and void with respect to non-disciplinary grievances. And so ultimately what will happen is if there's a aggrieved employee that's not satisfied with the process of the first two steps, takes it to the third step at the director level, and once the director makes a decision, the union really and the employee have the ability to file a contract claim under state statute, which then comes before the Board and then gets referred to the county attorney. There's no timeframe on how that process works. Ultimately, though, it is a necessary step because in order to get it in front of a judge, we have to have this board deny the claim, and then a lawsuit gets filed. And then you're in the court system and with all of the other litigants that are in the court system, both civil and criminal cases. And those cases get taken into the district court, and they can be very time-consuming and, quite frankly, costly for both sides. And the idea of a grievance procedure is to have a dispute resolution process that has some finality to it and some swiftness so that, particularly in grievances where there is an impact on promotion or hiring or selection of people to particular positions, if those get backed up, people get antsy because they want to see decisions made so that careers can be advanced or vacancies can be filled. And so we have some specific proposals that I'll provide to you. I have copies of those, and hopefully I'll have an opportunity to do that later today. But it is a concern because the union, you know, they have this contract, and they're telling people, "Well, we think it means this." And the management says, "Well, we think it means this." And ultimately, you want to have a third-party neutral tell the parties what it means. And our procedure now, in one particular case that's been resolved by the Nebraska Supreme Court, and that took four years for a simple contract dispute, and that's not in anybody's interest. So with respect to that, the language in that contract, we want to bring that to your attention and try to come to some resolution as to a more streamlined and less legalistic procedure so that we can get these matters before someone who can make a decision and have them finalized rather than be left in a situation of legal limbo. So I thank you for your time, and I look forward to speaking with you all later. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Corrigan, for bringing this matter to our attention. First off, I'd like to say thank you to the members of Lodge Eight. The correction employees do a magnificent job under difficult circumstances, and you provide an essential public service to this community, and you do it well. So thank you. We know it's hard. At this particular point in time, we are, I think, at very near a record-high occupancy at our correctional center. That makes it doubly difficult for you to perform your jobs. I know that there's been questions relative to staffing and overtime that we're hoping to see alleviated in some respect in the near future by the hiring of additional correctional officers. But tell me one thing, Mr. Corrigan, is there currently a backlog of grievances at the Corrections?
I don't know that we'd characterize it as a backlog. I think that there are two problems that the union perceives. One is there are grievances that seem to have no resolution, you know, that a decision is not being made at some step in the process. And, you know, I mean, for all intents and purposes, the grievance procedure is used by the union. It can be used by the employer if they think that there's a violation of a contract that's supposed to be used. But generally, it's employees saying, or the union saying, "We think that this particular circumstance or decision was in violation of some right that I held," or an individual employee held. And if there's no impetus on the part of-- the employee's got an obligation to file that grievance in a timely manner, appeal decisions of the committees in the process, steps one, two, and three, in a timely manner. But there's no, you know, corresponding obligation to respond in a timely manner so that there would be penalties. That's a concern of the union. Now, whether there's a backlog or not, I mean, I know there's several grievances. I don't identify them individually, but there are grievances that the union is concerned about because no decision has been made. And if no decision's been made, you know, the problem as it's perceived persists. And once a decision is made, if it is not, you know, acceptable to the aggrieved employee, then the next step is the labyrinth of the contract claim statute, bringing a claim to you all, having it be considered by the county attorney, which in most cases, I have to imagine they are already fully aware of, but maybe not, and then being denied by the county so that it can go to court. And if there's no vote to deny the grievance, if no action is taken, we can't really take that into court unless there's some injunctive relief that's sought, and that, you know, you have to show that the harm is irreparable. And oftentimes, the harm is not irreparable because simple back pay can fix whatever problem you're having.
So if I understand you, the grievances are filed, then eventually work their way up to the director's level. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's where you're looking for pretty much an ultimate administrative decision on the facts of the grievance, right?
Correct.
Are there a number of those currently pending?
I believe there are-- there's one in particular that is pending that is causing some angst.
Okay.
But no, so I would say not a backlog, but it is--
Sure, sure.
It's a logjam in the process.
All right. And there's no 30, 60, 90 days determination clause that--
If there's no decision made within 10 days, your grievance can appeal. No, there has to be a decision by the director, in my understanding, to make that appeal.
If I hear you correctly, what you're proposing would be kind of amendment to the existing contract. Is that right?
It certainly could be, and I have the language that I'm going to suggest to the county, which is not dissimilar to the way that we handle these types of issues with a lot of different unions that we represent in the public sector, from police and fire and within the state employees as well, in terms of having a, ultimately, a third-party neutral arbitrator that, in one sense, is that process belongs to the parties in the sense of the union, one individual employee can't just force the county into arbitration. It has to be the union that goes. And because the union has the-- should have the financial wherewithal to bear equally in those costs, it's not-- both sides would share the cost of the arbitration, and there's a lot of different ways you can do it, either through a panel from the Federal Mediation Conciliation Service or agreed-upon panel. Many times, we can find people locally to arbitrate cases so that we don't have to pay for travel and other expenses related to that. But there's a lot of ways to skin the cat. But that's certainly the ability to have finality and some control over the process that belongs to the parties to the contract rather than to be cast into the court system, which I don't mind going to court. I mean, that's what lawyers do, but clients don't really like going to court over things that probably, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it may be who should have gotten to work in overtime, and it might be worth 16 hours of pay. And it would be better for the union to reach in their pocket and pay the guy the money than litigate it for five years. But it ain't right, and that's kind of how our feeling is.
Yeah, I think that makes some sense. I mean, litigation should be kind of a last resort. It's expensive, and it's timely, and, you know, justice delayed is justice denied. And so what we're trying to do is get as inexpensive and fair and quick a resolution of these as possible.
If I may, I apologize, Commissioner. Theresa Yurt County Attorney's Office, I wanted to make two additional points, if I may. First of all, with regards to a contract amendment, we would need to follow the contract in pursuing that, and this is not in appropriate form to go ahead and begin that process. And then secondarily, under citizen comments, it is in the best interest of the Board to not get into the substance of a citizen comment because it's not on the Board's agenda. And so there's a question of an open meetings issue with regards to that because the public wouldn't be aware of the substance. So I would suggest to the Board that to follow the Open Meetings Act and not dive into the substance with a citizen comment before-- so the public would have an opportunity later, should it be on the Board's agenda, that they may attend and participate in the discussion.
I appreciate that. I just have one last question for Mr. Corrigan, and that is, you indicated that this provision that you're proposing exists in other contracts locally. Are these public safety units that have this provision in their contracts?
Yes, and I, you know, to the county attorney's point, we bring this to your attention, and if there was an agreement, obviously, our members would have to vote on it. An agreement to amend an existing contract, you all would have to vote on it, and all that would take place pursuant to your rules in the public open meetings law act. So that, I understand that concern, but we think that that will be taken care of over time if, in fact, we can come to some agreement on it. But the other contracts, particularly police and fire and state employees of the state corrections units, have arbitration in their contracts, and it works. You know, I mean, we just arbitrated a case in Bellevue, Nebraska, last week. Bellevue's had arbitration since 1981. They-- it works. But not for discipline cases. And many of the first-class cities have a separate Civil Service Commission for discipline for police and fire, but they use arbitration for non-disciplinary grievances. And that seems to be a process that works for the litigants, I mean, the parties, to have some control over when and how those disputes get decided rather than the legalistic form of, you know, discovery and depositions. And ultimately, in wage cases, attorney's fees, because under the Wage Payment Collections Act, if I'm in court and I prove a contract that was violated, in addition to whatever wages or remuneration that was awarded, the court has an obligation to award fees of 25% at least, whatever the judgment was. And most of the time, you know, I mean, the last one we had with you all was a case worth about $700, and the attorney fee award was over $10,000 because of the time that we spent on it. So that's, you know, I like those cases, sure, but that doesn't make sense for you or-- and if we lose, then, of course, then my client's out the $10,000 or whatever they paid to litigate it. And so it's just not in either one of ours' interests to be doing that on these types of cases where it's more, it's about doing what's perceived to be the right thing, enforcing a contract, and not about making monetary decisions. And if we're going to file the contracts, yet be required to, in order to enforce them, spend thousands and thousands of dollars to prove a $500 point, it becomes nonsensical for us, and that's why we're here to bring this matter to you today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Mr. Corrigan, I want to thank you for coming today, and I echo what Commissioner Kavanaugh said about the men and women of Corrections. It is really a tough situation when you're trying to keep 30 or 40 people accused of first-degree murder and a lot of other people separated and keep the place running and content, and I congratulate the director and the staff as well. I am very happy you're here today because I've long felt that something needs to give on this, and I do realize that what I'd like to do is schedule some sort of a meeting that would be in full compliance with the open meetings. I don't feel this is a violation. I don't think it's extraordinary for the public to think that we might be discussing working conditions with employees. I think that's part and parcel of our, just our duties. But one of the things that I've been concerned about, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but these small infractions that really make life miserable for the employee, you know, like, say, for an example, this hasn't happened, but it did happen when I was mayor and the former police chief who left suddenly told people they couldn't park in a certain place. And there's, you know, no place for grievance. They actually had to sue the city of Omaha and go to the Nebraska Supreme Court to get a ruling on where they could park their cars. And that's the sort of stuff that really makes for strained relations. It just denies the relationship that we have with employees. You're the ones who carry out the work of this government, and when we treat you like enemies, my feeling is that that's just all wrong. We need to find a way, and that's what I think, I'm really glad you're saying what you are, Mr. Corrigan, because these, even these minor, minor things that really get under your skin, need to be settled somehow. And I know that unless it's discipline, it doesn't go to the Civil Service Commission, so you're out there. And it begins to build, and it makes life a little miserable sometimes. So I'd like to see that in contract language, something done to allow grievances of all sorts to be heard by somebody, if it's mediation, whatever it might be. I'd like to see what you have in mind, but I think that's where we need to head, and it will save us a ton of money. It will build even better relationships with our employees. That, to me, is county-wide we ought to be doing. And so I'm really glad you're here. You may be changing the whole face of labor relations with all the employees, Mr. Corrigan. So I really appreciate what you're doing, and I appreciate the leadership of FOP-8 as well, and it's really good that you brought this forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and Commissioner Boyle, why don't we have this at a criminal justice meeting? If you put it on the agenda--
Sounds criminal to me, doesn't it? Yes, we will. I'll put that on our criminal justice--
You guys take the criminal, we'll take the justice, okay?
Thank you. Very good.
Patrick?
I'll do that. Clearly, it's the county board's position on how to handle this. This is a subject of collective bargaining. It's my opinion, for what it's worth, that items of collective bargaining should be conducted in contract negotiations, discussed by the county board in executive session, and discussed with the union in the contract negotiations rather than public board meetings, public meetings.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, you know, I agree with you completely, Patrick, with this is because our relationship with some, with our employees, frankly, I will tell you candidly how I feel, it's off the rails. We are telling people who have grievances that are not of a disciplinary nature to pound sand and sue us for $700 and take us to the Nebraska Supreme Court over some overtime issue or something that's really petty, small dollars, the whole bit. And I just feel that, you know, our relationship with our employees, you know, we brag about what a great job they do, but in our contracts, sometimes we're a little remiss, in my opinion. And I know we're-- I don't care. This is, I think, fully compliant with open meetings, and I think it's a matter that we do need to discuss in public because how we treat our employees should be of concern to all the taxpayers of the county. And if we have, you know, happy employees who like going to work and are treated fairly, it makes a hell of a difference. So I'm very much in favor of this. I understand what you're saying, and I understand your point of view, but I think this is very healthy, and I appreciate this being brought out in the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corrigan.
I have no further comments. Thank you.
We will move to the report from the Director of Corrections.
Could I ask a question before we move on?
Yeah.
Where are we going from here with this? What happens?
I'll have to talk with our county attorney and--
Okay, so we'll see you in court, I guess? No, we won't either.
Now, that's not true, Commissioner Boyle.
We'll work with you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Mark Fox, Hall Director of Corrections.
Good morning.
You have before you the monthly report for June 2016, last month in the fiscal year. In closure number one, we completed the 1516 fiscal year under budget. It's a very busy year, as I've spoken to you in the previous 11 months of the fiscal year. In closure number two, community corrections. Douglas County was selected by the National Institute of Corrections to host site for offended workforce development specialist training. Douglas County is one of only two sites in the country selected in 2016 to host this two-week training. The second week of the training will be held in September. Thirty-two participants from Douglas County Corrections, Douglas County Community Mental Health Center, Lancaster County, Potawatomi County, Nebraska Department Correctional Services, several local nonprofit agencies, and a group from Nashville, Tennessee, completed the first week of training. The first round of interviews were completed for the supervisor of the social work program that we've spoken to in previous months. That's moving along very well. Hiring date is expected in next week or two. I'd also like to report that the intensive outpatient treatment program operated in partnership with the Community Mental Health Center celebrated its first anniversary in June. And I will ask that the Community Corrections Manager, Mike Myers, come forward and speak a little bit about the IOP program. And we also have some representatives here as well.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mike Myers, Community Corrections Manager for the Department of Corrections. Just to refresh your memory and to inform the public, we received a Second Chance Act grant to start an intensive outpatient treatment program for individuals with co-occurring mental health and substance abuse disorders. That program was started a year ago in June, enrolling its first client. They are all, it is basically run by the Community Mental Health Center, and so I'll defer to them and have them come up here in a moment. But it is a, it is truly one of the best assets that we've added to the Department of Corrections in recent years. They've had some extraordinary successes, and, you know, it's amazing to me, the buy-in that the clients have after they're no longer mandated to participate. I've been in the mental health and human services field for pretty much my whole adult life, and I know, and it's uncommon to have individuals who begin something mandated, continue the service after it's no longer mandated. And they've had a high rate of people doing that. They have graduates coming back and working as mentors for the current participants, and after-care support groups meeting in the community, and the statistics that are in the report, I think, admittedly, early on in the process, are very promising. The program recently hired its last staff member to bring it up to full staffing levels, so the capacity is increasing, so they'll serve even more individuals in the second year than they did in the first year, ramping up services. And I'm going to call on Whitney Johnson, and Lydia can come up as well, and they can, I'll let them delve into the stats and let them have their moment.
Good morning.
Good morning. Is there a place to put this?
You can put it on the table, and we'll see if we can get it to project up.
Oh, that's good.
There we go. Perfect. I'm Whitney Johnson. I'm the case manager for the IOP program, and this is Lydia Dumbravsky, who is our new therapist, so we are now up to four staff members. Yay.
Yay.
Just briefly with the stats, we have had 91 clients come through our program, and as of this week, we have had 38 graduates. Thirty-five of the 38 graduates have had no new charges since graduating our program. All of them had maintained their stable housing, and 35 of 38 are employed. One of them is retired military, so he is not getting a job. I think one of the biggest successes that we have is our after-care support group. We have anywhere from five to 12 members coming to this support group regularly, which is wonderful. We've had a lot of good camaraderie with our clients, coming back to the group, being mentors, just continuing to support each other in a way that we can't as staff. You know, they see each other graduating, moving on, going back into the community, being successful, and I think that speaks more than what we can tell them. I think one of the big stats that, for me, as a mother hits home, is the fact that 18 children have been reunited with their parents, living at home with them, being successful. So for me, that's one of the big things that has come out of this, and I'm sure you can agree as well. Do you have anything you want to add? Do you have any questions for us?
Yes, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, can you tell me, who are, this is kind of a stupid question, but I know the answer won't be stupid. Who are the people, the individuals who are in this group? How do they get selected, or do they volunteer, or do you go get them?
Lately, we've had a lot of people asking for the program. The processes and the reentry assistance program-- In order to get into our program, they have to have either a history of or symptoms of mental health. They also have to have a history of substance use, so that dual diagnosis component. So that referral comes to me, and then I meet with them and go through a series of questions to kind of screen them first off. And if I feel that they're appropriate for our program, they are scheduled for a chemical dependency evaluation by one of our therapists.
What are their, generally, what are the offenses? Do you have any people who were, were felons in the past or?
Yes.
Records like that? So you're treating some people who have been guilty of felons?
Yes.
Not, of course, not in our facility, are, is it? Tell me, yes?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I ask is I got stopped over the weekend by a man who's a felon, and he went on to get a PhD, but he is, and very interested in trying to do some things, try to help some people that are felons, but they're not incarcerated. So maybe we need to figure out a way to open the back door and let some people in.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I was just going to add, the, the grant that funds this currently requires that individuals are incarcerated on at least the first day of the program. Our long-term plan for sustainability is to have referrals off of, from the community, specifically from the criminal justice community, probation, drug court, et cetera, for folks who aren't in custody that can avail themselves of a service that's kind of embedded into the criminal justice community. I think that's one of the big advantages of this program, is these folks understand the environment, they understand the court system and how it works, and how to better integrate the services they provide with the, with the needs and requirements of the justice system as well.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, and I'd like to point out that only 10% have recommitted a crime, which for recidivism is very low, especially with mental health. Isn't it usually over 50%?
I think it's 60.
60%?
Actually, yes.
Okay, so that, you know, people keep saying you got to do something about mental illness. What are we going to do? How are we going to do it? This is a big step in that direction. Let me rephrase that. This is a starting step in that direction. There is so much more we can do. The thing is, we have to bite the bullet and be willing to fund it. And if we don't bite that bullet, and if we're not willing to fund it, we can talk all we want about helping mentally ill, but nothing's going to happen. Thank you.
No other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And continuing on with the Community Corrections Report, the Douglas County Department of Corrections partnership with Metropolitan Community College continues to flourish in addition to the orientation sessions being provided in Community Corrections, as well as the main jail. Fourteen individuals traveled to Metropolitan Community College and obtained their forklift certification by successfully completing this workshop. We talk about vocations and vocational training, and MCC has come in and assisted us with that, and, you know, 14 certifications in that particular job field is very good in terms of assisting people upon their release from our facility. A 24/7 alcohol sobriety program had 16 admissions, 3,036 breath tests were conducted, 12 were positive for alcohol use, there were no, no-shows for testing. The overall compliance rate for breath testing was 95, approximately 99.5%. Thirty-five individuals were monitored for a total of 874 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were no, there were no-shows, five tampering violations, two alcohol violations. Overall SCRAM compliance was 99%, 99.2%. Work release admitted 54 individuals. Work release clients donated 1,490 hours of community service. House arrest admitted 106 individuals for the month. Those individuals contributed 217 hours of community service, and we're also in the process of looking at the RFPs for the new electronic monitoring proposals. Four vendors were selected to provide demonstrations in July, and the committee plans to recommend a vendor by the middle of July. Reentry assistance program, 33 individuals were admitted to RAP. One individual achieved their GED. In-house corrections programs, 61 individuals were admitted to corrections programs in the jail. Pretrial services, 56 referred for priority prosecution. 1,609 bed days were saved, 243 were placed on pretrial for the month, and 978 individuals were managed on the program, and 380 inmates visited the law library. Closure number three, United States Marshal Service will be in to conduct their annual inspection. Closure number four, applicants are being interviewed currently for the National Correctional Officer Academy, which should launch in August. Closure number six, we had 1,500, almost 1,600 admissions in, in the month of June, and approximately 1,599 releases. So to your point, Commissioner Boyle, it's a very, very busy month, and in fact, we hit historically high numbers on both the female population and the total intake. In fact, we hit 1360 a week and a half, two weeks ago. We've never held that many in the history of the Department of Corrections for Douglas County, and we had 226 females, and we've never held that many females in the history of the Douglas County Department of Corrections. Our ADP last month was 1,217. The United States Marshal Service, excuse me, the United States Marshal Population decreased very slightly. ICE population increased, felony pretrial population increased, misdemeanor pretrial population increased, female population increased, and there are three large, at the time of this writing, there were three large female housing units open. Turning to enclosure number seven, medical, 1,258 intake screenings, there were 532 H&amp;Ps or health and physical assessments, 545 discharge referrals. Closure number eight, mental health, initial psych assessments, 43. There were 142 initial mental health assessments. There were 62 mental health infirmary placements, and insofar as referrals to community-based mental health services, 19 to outpatient psych, 348 to mental health and co-occurring disorder treatment programs, 24 to mental therapy, and one to long-term psych. I would call to your attention, if you flip a couple of pages to the charts indicating population history, it's about three pages back from the end of my cover, you'll see the, the ticks up in males, females, and ADP, ending in the month of June. You can also see the homeless population climbed during this reporting period, and I added, because of our historically high numbers, I also added another page with two additional charts. You're looking at the pretrial and sentenced inmates, and at the top, and you're looking at the chart for female inmates at the bottom, and you can see the spikes in the pretrial population, both male and female, and you can see the spike in the female population in the, in the bottom, bottom chart.
Commissioner Craft?
When you were talking about the 14 certifications for forklift operators, there's a big demand for welders, so can somebody go to Metro and get certified to be a welder?
That's probably a little bit longer program than the forklift certification, but we had talked about that in our meetings with Metro, and that's why the Metro staff comes into the facility, so they can establish that relationship with the soon-to-be-released individual, and they can leave our space, get onto Metro, get signed up for a welding certification program, and then move forward from there. So it's really important that those individuals from Metropolitan Community College get into our, our facility and talk with individuals who have an aptitude or interest in that sort of thing, and we're working on that. What I would like to see, and we're talking about that with Metro also, is to have them come more frequently, because our population turns over so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Mark, let me, okay, so the, the census, the pretrial number is somewhere around, 96, okay, 966, that's today's census, and I'm trying to find that, what does that entail of people that's out on some type of pretrial program and who's in? That, that's the thing, so there's about 900 people currently on pretrial. All of them are not out being monitored?
No, 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 that 978, those are, those are individuals that are out in the community on pretrial.
Okay.
That doesn't incorporate anybody in secure custody.
Okay, so there's, there's like, we're managing about 900 people out right now?
Yes.
Pretrial, in various custody ranges?
All minimum.
Okay. I guess what I'm, I'm just trying to understand, what's the capacity that, you know, with the, the number of people in, what's the, I guess, your capacity to increase somebody on pretrial, and are there more people that if there was stronger monitoring could be out on pretrial?
We have, we have really screened that population. There's some different things that we can do with that population, and I believe that Mike Myers and I have talked about getting more of them involved in 24/7 program. That's some ongoing conversations we're having with the county attorney and city prosecutor's office, and, and I think there is some potential there to get more people out on pretrial through more aggressive use of that program. We're having those conversations, we're just not there yet. However, those numbers continue to, 24/7 numbers continue to run at about 100, a little, 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 little south of 100.
Okay. And I guess the, the last question is, so based on the fact that GED needs to be done on computer now?
Yes.
Let me have, what have you, have you lessened the reins on internet access to be able to open up more, you know, online possibilities with Metro or anybody else?
No, we, we have sufficient firewalls in place to deal with issues related to internet access. It's more of a process of, of capacity, and the, the new process to attain your GED is more cumbersome than it was with the paper-pencil process.
So you base that?
It's a more difficult, it's a more difficult program, too, and test.
So I'm, I'm assuming that the access to internet is more linear than it was just because of GED? I guess I'm asking, are you looking to increase it now that Metro is, you know, you, more partnership with Metro? I guess what I'm trying to get at is pay grants are supposedly made available now to people there, so that, I'm assuming increases the possibilities for some work done inside, so when they transition out, they are ready to, to go. And I just, I just always thought that the internet policies were kind of constrained, but now that GED is there, is it loosened up?
Security with the internet is not my concern. It's, it's getting people in to teach, test. That, that's the capacity that we need to build. We can deal with the securities concerns as far as the internet's concerned. I need to get teachers in here, we need to be able to keep people long enough, we need to find space for them to sit in a classroom, so they can take their instruction for, for literacy, they can take their instruction for mathematics or history or what have you, and that's, that's, those are the issues for me, is building capacities within the GED program, not the internet piece. We, we solved that problem when we stood the program up over a year ago.
Well, no, that's what I'm getting at. Are the, are your technology capacities to the point where, you know, most people teach classes, they don't have to be in the classroom to teach? Are you capable of doing that? Or does there need to be some upgrade to do that? For instance, I mean, like on certain classes?
Sure, online class, online instruction. We've not had discussions about online instruction, but most of our instruction has been from the old pedagogical paradigm, and so we've not, we've not explored online instruction for them. So that's certainly something that we can look into.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Excuse me, yes, I want to ask if, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you say you can't answer now, I don't want to, or I take the fifth, that's okay, all right. But you heard this morning about what Mr. Corrigan was suggesting. Do you have any initial reaction to that, that you want to talk about, or do you want to reserve that for later? What's your feeling on that? I don't, don't want to put you on the spot.
No, I, I would reserve that for later, but I will say, the union folks and I, we have a lot of discussions, a lot of informal discussions, we have formal discussions, we agree on a lot of things, we disagree on some things, and this is another area, we'll have to sit down at the table and work some things out, and look forward to that. We have open lines of communication, we don't agree on everything, but that's why we sit down at the table and continue to forge ahead.
Good. Well, we're fortunate to have that attitude between all the parties, that's good, we want to nourish that, too. I think, you know, in light of the fact that the facility is so overcrowded, I don't know when the last time was that we took a tour down there, I, I would like to, if it's convenient for you, Doctor, if it's all right, if we, if I'd come, I.
We're prepared for you to come today.
Today, we're supposed to take a tour.
Yes, you're scheduled today.
Is it on there today?
Yeah, today.
Okay, we usually ignore it, so I didn't.
Yeah, following the board meeting.
Okay, and we've got minstrel sandwiches on, for lunch.
Lunch for everybody.
No, we don't either. But that's great, we'll, we'll be down to, down to see you then this afternoon.
Mark, I have a, I have a meeting at the airport.
Depends on how that goes at 11:00, so I knew we had a shorter meeting today, but we'll see what happens.
Mark, I had a conversation yesterday with the executive director from the Brain Injury Alliance, and I'll be asking for a meeting for you and probably some folks from the Mental Health Diversion Program to meet with her. What we're looking at is a potential to do a pilot during the assessment screening for brain injury. There's been a lot of conversation, and it's been going on for a number of years, but it's finally one of those things where people are kind of paying a little bit more attention, but a lot of times, an individual that is exhibiting behavioral health issues may actually, actually have a brain injury that's never been diagnosed or never been treated properly. And so what happens is, they get into the mental health system, or they start to abuse a substance in order to mask their symptoms. And so we're trying to build some awareness around that, and one of the ways to do that is to gather some data, and so I'll be trying to set up a meeting for you to meet those folks. And it's like a, an additional three or five questions that you ask the individual during an assessment process.
Now's, now's the perfect time to do it.
Yeah.
Bringing that new person off of that program.
Exactly.
That'd be the perfect place to do it.
Yep, so I'll set that up, and it was a very interesting conversation, and she's really tried, they have a small, it's a statewide organization, and they're really trying to do, to gather the data at this point, working primarily right now with Senator Bowles. And so, again, I think us being the largest correctional facility, both for our in-house folks and our community correction folks, if we can gather some data and have some evaluation done on that, I think it would go a long way.
As you recall, this whole first phase with this initiative is to, is to gather data to point us in the right direction with respect to what type of assistance, further assistance we not, we need to make that one handoff to the community, so this is the perfect setup for that.
Okay, great. No other questions or lights? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Hita, and Mr. Craft, Commissioner Moore.
Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, July 12, 2016, and item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, July 26, 2016. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Boyle, second by Craft. Please vote.
I abstained, because there's a check in there for management.
All right. Commissioner Boyle?
I wanted to comment on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Consent agenda, items A through J, there are a couple of notes. Item F has been removed, and item H, Teresa had a comment on that?
If I'm, Teresa here at County Attorney's Office. For F, if we could lay it over rather than remove it, that would be wonderful, perhaps to the August 2 meeting, if that's agreeable to the board. And then with regards to letter H, I had a correction, and I brought a corrected resolution. The agenda item is clear that the purpose of the item before. The agenda item is clear that the purpose of the item before the Board is for the Sheriff's Office to auction off unclaimed items, and that's fine. The resolution has, simply has a typographical error in it, and instead of transferring the net proceeds to the treasurer in the be it resolved, it actually transfers the property. And I'm pretty sure the treasurer would, it'd be more appropriate to transfer the money. So I have a corrected resolution, I can come down and put it on the, the Elmo if the Board would wish to see it.
No, it's just changing the funds to, from property.
Yes, the funds, the money actually needs to go to the treasurer, and that's per statute, but rather than the property, and there's simply that typographical error.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. Commissioner Boyle?
I have a question, did that go before the County Attorney's Office? And not that it's very irresponsible to catch typos, but did that go, was this resolution cleared by an attorney?
I don't believe it came through our office initially. I, I did note it and reached out to the Sheriff's Office yesterday, and I think it was simply a mistake that they have more than one version of this resolution, Commissioner.
The reason I ask is I, I rely on these resolutions being reviewed, you know, as to form by legal staff, so I, I hope that we get into that practice, that's what I've always thought took place. So, and this is not any big, you know, taking you to the barn or anything like that, I just think that it needs to be, I, I rely on that when I see these on here, I, I think that our legal beagles have looked at them and said they're approved as to form, so that's what I want. Thank you.
Was that your comment on?
No.
Okay, do you want to?
You know, and these are, these are just comments, I, I, first of all, I want to, this is a little bit off track, but Danny asked, sent a list of the payments, and I spent a good time on Sunday, which was a wonderful time, but anyway, went through, and I've got about, I'm telling you, about ten pages of questions and comments, you know, we're, we're buying embroidered shirts and all sorts of stuff, but anyway, that's, I'll get that to you. On this consent agenda, and there's, this is really not a criticism, but it's just something I think we need to take a look at. Item C is approving a lease at the Keyline Building, which is fine, we need it, and I'm going to vote for it, but it's for five years, and the total is nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. And not that it's relevant, but it is to me, the valuation of that building is one point four million. And so the slack between the, what we're paying for lease and what the valuation is since 2015 is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. My point is that, and I did ask Mr. Leahy to give us a full listing of all the leases that we have, and they, they do come through, and they, you know, there's one that I just saw recently with the AIM, A-I-M building across the street, maybe I saw it in the newspaper, that they bought the, some, some building, I don't know, it gets right across the street from us, and AIM is nonprofit, and we rent space from them. Well, my question is, are we paying property taxes? This is the Woodman question in real life. So I'd be interested, if we are leasing from the A-I-M building, I guess I'll ask Patrick or Mr. Leahy, if we are, I'd like to know if we're paying taxes. Because I think when a nonprofit rents to, you know, a, a private entity, a business entity, they have to, the business entity has to pay taxes, but I'm curious whether a nonprofit like us, if that's what we are, governmental body, do we have to pay taxes when we're renting from a nonprofit? I know we do when we rent from other owners. So it's a question we need to get resolved, I think, so it's, it's live, and I'd like the answer. But anyway, and my point about this rented, the Keyline is not that it's, it's reasonable and all the rest is fine, but I think it points out, we have all these branch offices at various places, we rent space all over town, all over the county, and we need to get a handle on it, is it time for us to take this nine hundred and some thousand dollars, almost a million dollars, and focus it someplace else? Is it possible for us to do that? So that's my question, and I think it's a question for probably Mr. Kavanaugh's committee.
Okay, Commissioner Duda?
Well, thank you, and if it's for Commissioner Kavanaugh, I shouldn't respond, but I just want to say on the Keyline Building, we did tour it years ago with the idea of, would this be a good, I, I'm a firm supporter of the three campus concept that Douglas County is following, and, and as a part of our downtown campus, would it make sense for that building to be a part of it? But it would be so cost prohibitive to the ADA problems. Every, every restroom door is narrow, has a step up over the plumbing. The remodeling to bring it up to ADA would be so cost prohibitive.
And that's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
I'm just saying, should we spend that money someplace else?
Okay.
I used to work in that building, so I know exactly what you're talking about. Yeah, and someone used to lock the doors to the men's room when you tried to get in, there's a little button you push, it's an old building, which was always a thrill.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I think Commissioner Boyle makes some excellent points here, and to the extent that, I'd be inclined to ask that C be laid over so that we can discuss this. If we're paying essentially the equivalent of the assessed value of a building in a five-year lease, I guess I, I'd have some questions about that. And, you know, this is part and parcel, as you've indicated, of our overall space needs question that we're spending a lot of time on because it impacts on our proposed bond issue.
Right.
And things like this fall exactly into that. I don't think that we should just, on a consent calendar without any discussion, this never came before the committee, go forward with contracts of this extent, five years is going to exceed anybody here's term of office currently, and for a dollar amount that really, as you point out, is kind of an eye popper. So, you know, I think that maybe it would be in the best interest of the taxpayers if we took a little closer look at this item, and that would allow us to make a more informed choice. So, you know, I'd, I'd propose maybe that we just lay it over for a few weeks and revisit it. Not that it's not a good space, not that it's not a, a good deal, but it impacts in a bigger picture, as we're talking about every time we meet on the space needs question, of, we're moving big components presumably, if the bond issue goes forward, of county government, some of them from owned property, some of them from leased property, but they all have an impact behind them when we do that, and so this component should be part of that discussion, and it hasn't been.
Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Kavanaugh, when's your next administration?
I think it's scheduled for the end of this month, I want to say the 29th or something like that.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the 29th, I think that's a Friday.
Whatever, the Tuesday, the last Tuesday meeting that we have in August.
Okay, maybe the 26th or 5th. Does anyone know what we're paying a square foot?
And we don't meet on the 20th.
There is a meeting before the end of August scheduled.
Before the end of July?
Or, August.
August, okay, good. We'll look at that. What are we paying there?
Terry Leahy, public property. Let me answer, answer the AIM Institute question first. That's a county attorney victim witness program, it's paid for by a grant. To my knowledge, they don't pay taxes.
We need to be sure.
Okay.
And if we don't, if we don't, this flies in face of the county attorney's opinion, which I asked if we rented space from Woodman Tower, would we pay taxes? And they said yes. And so if we donate AIM, then we donate Woodman Tower, and let's get it out, the public, Baird Homes moving out, and they got fabulous law offices, we had to move part of the county attorney over there. I mean, we're missing the boat on this thing. We need to get our act together on it, I'm really, you know, we really need to get it thought out, because this is conflicts with the, an official opinion I've got from the county attorney.
Okay. A little background on the juvenile probation. The reason this lease looks so large, and it is, it's fifteen thousand, three hundred square feet, this is, this is a combined lease that was, two leases were combined. As a state authorized more juvenile probation officers, we had to
Right.
Add space two years ago. So I structured those so both would come up at the same time, so we could negotiate a better situation. The issue is, unless there's a miracle in Lincoln, we've often thought that we could remove some of these statutes that forces the county to pay these leases, but we don't really have much of a choice, especially with the court system being in the courthouse, and those folks that need to be on probation need to walk over the Keyline and meet with their probation officer. So answer your square foot cost, it's twelve fifty a square foot, it's a gross lease, and that's why it looks so large, in my opinion.
Are you done, Commissioner Morgan?
Okay, and when does our current lease expire?
You'll love this, July 31.
So there's a part of me that wonders if we shouldn't just ask, because we've been good tenants, so that we have the time, maybe for a six-month extension, and the reason I ask that is I saw there was an email this morning that Larry Miller sent out, and I saw Larry earlier here, but the assessor is touring some buildings, I know, looking at
Right.
Where they might move the registered deeds and so on, and I think you know that, hopefully.
I do.
Okay. So my thought is, if they're moving out of space, would we be able to put them here? Because we don't want to leave space vacant, because we're going to be paying for it anyway, and we've had that conversation amongst ourselves, and I think we need to really be certain that we're filling everything in this building first, because we have to pay whether it's vacant or not. Am I correct, Claire?
Correct.
So why don't you talk to the owner, if the other commissioners agree with me?
The owner is here today, I had him attend.
Okay.
Matt Currie, if you'd like to ask some questions.
All right. I guess what I'd be saying to you, and I don't want to put Matt in a position of talking about this, I'd just soon ask you to talk to him, to find out, so we can get things straight, be sure what we need, and see if we can do a six-month extension of that, so we kind of look at where we are. Or, you know, go ahead and sign a five-year, but have it with a one-year, at one year we can terminate the lease. Because I think we need to be certain, we're not getting any TI money, are we?
No.
So if we could do that as a good tenant, and then let Commissioner Kavanaugh's committee assess what we're doing in these different spaces that we've talked about for some months, so that's where I'd like to go, and if the owner wants to talk or ask his questions, I'm open to letting him talk all he wants.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I didn't do this to rock the cart, but I, I do dig into things, and I saw this, and this is not extraordinary, as a matter of fact, this is one of the better leases, it's a great building, great landlord, we're happy with being there, and I don't want to do anything to damage the relationship, but I do have a lot, a tremendous amount of respect for Commissioner Morgan and his approach to these things, so I would defer to that. You know, maybe we needed to do a year and, and then talk a little further, but at the same time, I don't know if that'll affect the amount of the, of the rent, it may, he may say he wants more if he only gets it for a year, so that's something that needs to be negotiated, but getting it on the public. My point in bringing this up is that we have an awful lot of leases, and we are in a lot of different places at a lot of cost, and that's why I asked for a list for Mr. Leahy of what it is to share with the Board. It, it is an eye-opener, I remember looking at some building, I was asked by someone who owns some buildings to come out and talk, and so I did, and I was asked, would you extend this way into, you know, 20, 2025 or something, and this is what it would cost? Well, then I looked at the valuations of the buildings, and it was astronomical, we were buying those buildings ten times over. And so we need to decide, it's a policy issue, are we tenants or are we owners? And does it make more sense for us to, you know, take these buildings off the tax rolls and, or buy some building someplace, or build something someplace that will be more efficient and would be owned by the taxpayers and regional governmental centers that are accessible to the interstate and so forth? You know, my recollection is that the fourth floor in this building, if we remodel it for the register of deeds to fit in everybody in there, or whatever it is she wants to do, it's a million dollars. That's just, that's nuts to do that, it's just, it's crazy. And Diane is right about looking around, and we are too, and we need to coordinate all this, but all this is going on swirling, and we need to have a policy, are we tenants? Are we owners? The money makes the sense, we've got a terrific asset with Mr. Morgan for starters. The question about AIM is really critical, because if, if we don't pay taxes in there as a governmental body, then we need to really seriously look at renting from the Woodman Tower. They got a favorable ruling, they're nonprofit, if you're a Baird Home, you pay property taxes, if you're Douglas County, do you? I don't think so. So, I mean, we could move over there, all this stuff we're paying, you know, rent, and get a, I think, a good deal. So let's, I just want to look into it, there's a lot of things to look at. One thing I want to emphasize, though, is that we are very fortunate in this lease to have an excellent landlord, he takes care of things, takes care of the building, it is a good facility, it's adjacent, it's what we need, so please don't take this as a criticism of that building, it's just our policy, should we continue to rent.
Commissioner Craft?
That's it.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I was discussing something with Commissioner Morgan.
Talking about lunch?
No, about an agenda item. This includes heat, it includes electricity, it includes water, it includes everything.
It's all inclusive.
Right. So a question for Commissioner Morgan is, how much are utilities per square foot on the average? Well, I would assume.
I mean, the owner could tell us better than I can on that building. Do you know, I'm not sure if the taxes are a dollar a square foot or what it, what they are, and I'm not certain if janitorial's included, but I'm guessing that that building could be around four fifty. Woodman would be a higher CAM charge because of the tax assessment per square foot.
May I address the?
Please.
Could you name your name, please?
Name and address, please.
Currie, I'm sorry, I'm not used to these situations. Matthew Corey, and we, we have a management company in Omaha, Corey Management, I believe the property is listed with the county assessor under KMC Properties. On that lease that we offered the county, it's full service, no CAMs whatsoever, we're making approximately thirty-one cents a square foot on that lease. Basically, we, we are operating on very, very thin margins, we are a family-owned company, we basically, HVAC is basically serviced by our own people, electricity is, electrical problems, issues are serviced by us, janitorial is serviced by us, with the exceptions of the space that Douglas County, interior space that Douglas County does offer. They do have a janitorial crew that comes in, I believe, once a week, and we do the balance of that, of the, of the remainder. But basically, we're operating on very, very thin margins. Our competitors, anybody doing what we do, is probably going to be about twenty to twenty-three, twenty-four percent higher, and this is what we look at when we look at building, I'm going off the numbers that we look at when we look at office buildings. Wells Fargo Building, right next to our Service Life Building, is operating at about eighty percent over what we operate at, and, and it could be argued that it's a hundred and twenty percent, depending on how you want to do the numbers. But nobody operates at, on the numbers that, the numbers that we operate on. Like I said, we're a family-owned operation, and we do the best we can do. I've done the best I could do with this lease.
Commissioner Craft, did you have any other?
I do, but I see that Commissioner Morgan wanted to say something.
No, I haven't turned on my laptop.
So that thirty-one cent is per month or per year?
Thirty, thirty-one cents is per month.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yes.
So it's about three sixty a year per square foot, is your profit out of the twelve fifty we pay. Now, that's not unreasonable when you look at unseen expenses that could come up, you know, the roof blows up because of whatever, or the chill goes up.
This is not included capital budget at all.
Right, that's what I figured. And I, I think that's extremely reasonable, so we could easily take six dollars away from our twelve fifty per square foot, and it'd be six fifty a square foot, which in today's market for a downtown office building, I believe, could be wrong, is fairly reasonable, is it not?
I could answer that.
I'll, I'm done.
I know that Central Park Plaza has some leases at six dollars a foot triple net. I'm not sure how you calculate your profit, but what I'm saying is, when you lease triple net, what you're then paying for is the utilities. You're not paying for repairs to those utilities, you're only paying for the utilities, the taxes, insurance on that building, and then janitorial, and if there's some outside snow removal or lawn, that comes into play. And I'm saying the outside expenses on this building, I'm estimating, are at about four dollars and fifty cents at the most. That would be the utilities, taxes, insurance, because we're doing our own janitorial. When some other buildings, the taxes are higher, how many square feet currently are vacant in that building, or is it 100% occupied?
It's approximately 82% occupied. And by the way, the Wells Fargo Building over there, that we had under, that we were dealing on, the CAM charges were $8 a square foot, 801 a square foot.
With janitorial?
Without janitorial, 801 a square foot.
Being as you came up, are you receptive to giving us time to look? Because we know that the assessor could be moving out of that fourth floor, we talked about it. Are you receptive to that?
We, I would have to discuss this with my wife, basically my partner, and...
I respect that.
This is not what I came in here to discuss. We made a proposal to Jerry and Jeff here, and this was not mentioned, and it's probably, I really can't give you an answer to that at this moment.
Okay.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I don't like us seeing, being frozen into inaction because something else is going on. So, what if Diane Badiato is looking at more space? We passed a budget last week with $0 in there for her to relocate, let alone a million dollars to refinish the fourth floor. She can look all she wants, she likes to look around, we like to say, go for it, but we're, I have no intention of paying for a new lease for her to move out of this building, that's not in my long-range plan, and I don't think it is for this board. And so, for that to freeze us into saying, well, we can't do anything because we don't know what she's going to do, I know what she's going to do, she's going to stay where she is until we decide to budget for something else. We've got a good deal here, it's a good location for probation, we have a legal commitment to provide this space for the state for probation, we've got a good location, we've got a good deal, our lease expires at the end of this month, I don't understand why we say, well...
This is the monthly test of the Emergency Alert System for the Broadcast and Cable Systems of Nebraska. Equipment is being tested that can quickly provide warnings during emergencies. If this had been an actual emergency, official messages would have followed the alert tone. This concludes this test of the Emergency Alert System.
I'll suggest, relative to, I've been down in Lincoln too long, relative to, taking just a month and looking at it, Mr. Corey, is it?
Corey, yes.
Nothing against you, sir, or your fine building. When I first worked for the county way back when, my office was in your building, I have fond memories of that building, I go there a lot, it's a good building. But we just have a bigger picture that we're trying to fit your space into, and if this had come up, you know, a month ago or two months ago, so that we could have this discussion then, we wouldn't be where we're at now. What we would look at, sir, is coming back to you in four weeks' time, and I'm fairly confident that we would say, this is the way that we want to go, but it'd be a comfort level for us on a lot of different other properties and space needs that we're simultaneously considering, that have nothing to do with you. So, if that's okay with you, I was in a similar situation, I was in the AIM building for 30 years, did four or five leases over that period of time, and we would commonly, at the end of a lease, go to a month, a month, for a brief period of time, so that we could conclude our lease negotiation, and it was no harm, no foul, and I think that we would hold you harmless in that respect as well. So, that's all we're asking for, is just give us a month to talk amongst ourselves, bring it before our committee, and fit it into the bigger picture. And I think that Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Boyle raise valid points, but unless we're going to spend a couple hours talking about it here today, we just need a little time.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, the last thing I want to do is damage a husband-wife operation, mom and pop, literally. I don't want to see that happen, you know, and Commissioner Duda is right, we're right across the street, that's where they belong, I mean, it's not, it's a great operation, it makes a lot of sense, and I'm not, I don't want to see us do anything that, you know, we're not talking about moving out of there or anything like that. I only raised it because of the cost, and, you know, we don't really have a policy too much on, that's my question, we need to decide, do we want to be tenants, do we, should we be owners somewhere? So, and I agree completely about moving out of the building and all the rest, I mean, those things you made valid points, I agree with you. But, and at the same time, and I don't want to do anything that harms Mr. Corey, frankly, and I would say the same thing if it was a large real estate company, I think you need to be treated fairly, you've treated us very fairly. And, you know, you're a great landlord, from what I've heard, and so, I don't know that we have any bad landlords, we're all, we're very fortunate. So, I don't want to, I didn't mean to rock the boat to this extent, but I do think we do need to take a look at something, but maybe what we ought to be doing is what Commissioner Morgan suggested, do a year lease, and that may influence the cost. I mean, if you're suddenly looking at a year instead of five, I don't know what that, what that does to the cost, to be candid with you, so I'll defer, I have so much respect for Commissioner Morgan, that if he's saying we should do a year and then take that time to really look at what we're doing, maybe that's what we should do, but I'm not, I'm not in favor of moving out of that building, I want to make that clear, but I don't want to, I'm really sorry that I caused you this.
I will interject two of the situations.
I can hear you.
I will interject a couple of the things, I shouldn't probably be, again, I'm really not prepared for this today, this is, if you'd called me and you had a electrical issue, I'd probably be way more prepared, you know, here in the court, or in the civic center, but I'll go, I'll go move on. Both elevators in that building, we have, we have in our capital budget, which does, has nothing to do with the .31 percent, excuse me, .31 cents, so-called profit built into this lease, that .31 cents has been totally wiped out by two issues. One, the city has made us sprinkle the building within the last 12 months. It's not in the, that's not in the formula at all. Another situation, both elevators are going to be replaced, good Lord willing. That is not in the capital, that's not in this budget at all. It's basically, the building's going to lose us probably $300,000 to $400,000 this year, and probably another half a million dollars next year. And with this lease, you know, it, we've done one other thing in there that was totally against, maybe my better judgment, and my wife was totally against this, was offering a five-year, a five-year option on the lease with 1% incremental increases per year. Kim said, basically, Matt, you need to sell the building to the developers or start getting the rent out of the place. We have buildings throughout the city, throughout, we have buildings in California that make money, buildings and over on the other side of the river, they make up for this, this is nothing but a, this is basically nothing but a tax write-down for us, and we do the best we can by you people. We do the, if there's maintenance that needs to be done, Mary calls, we are there, period, somebody is there, somebody is on site from 9:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening, that works for us. We do the best we can with these buildings, it's not perfect, these are old buildings, and we're doing the best that we can with them, downtown here, we're doing the best that we can. There's nothing perfect in this world, and like I said, these buildings are not perfect, but we're doing, and we're, but we are making improvements to the key line, we are putting the elevators in, we've got it sprinkled, the HVAC is by, built by how, compared to how old the building is, the HVAC is barely new, it's within 10 years old. Okay, I'll leave it go at that, okay?
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, and I'm not in favor of laying this over, I'm in support of the lease and passing it today. I see no reason to lay it over, because if we lay it over a month, we're going to accept it then. I just, it takes time to plan, we look at a five-year development plan, this is five years, the five-year strategic plan, so we can start strategizing. I would also like to see a difference in how we handle upcoming leases, I think it should go through the committee first, so that we can discuss it, because we didn't know about this until we read the agenda ourselves. But as I said, I'm not in favor of laying this over.
Commissioner Morgan?
Jerry wanted to say something to Mark.
Well, I just wanted to address the process. We probably didn't go through Commissioner Kavanaugh's committee, we haven't in the past, but I try to give commissioners a heads-up when something is up, like a treasure lease or a probation lease, but we've been meeting with Matt for six months, and the things that you've all discussed, we've kind of done that on our own, Matt doesn't know this, but Jeff and I, we've looked at options for probation around this area, and we beat him up pretty good in the last six months. We've met with him once a month since January, knowing that July 31 was the deadline. So, that's why it's there, and if that's an error on my part, I apologize, but we've been on it, because it's a big lease, and it's also a big obligation that we can't control because of the statute of the state of Nebraska. So, just to clarify that.
Commissioner Morgan?
First, Mr. Corey, I'm in favor of continuing to stay in your building. Jerry and Jeff, you've been working on it six months, and maybe I missed out, but I think you said, we haven't had those discussions. So, it's like you and your wife working on things, you have discussions, know what you're thinking about on the elevators or whatever it is. We're making a big obligation, and I'm disappointed that we haven't had a request to say, hey, on Wednesday morning, or Tuesday at his 8:00 a.m. meeting, or whatever. We haven't talked about, hey, we've been out looking at these options, here's what the comps are, here's what we should be doing. So, all I'd say is, it's disappointing. I remember you calling me when we did the one on 24th and Cummings, you told me, hey, here's what's going on, or the one out on maybe 73rd, you called me, told me, what do you think? And I said, hey, it sounds good, you went through some details, you, correct?
Correct.
This one, no conversation. So, today we're here, I'd like to have us in the next, not ask for six months, but I'd like to have in the next two weeks, sometime we have a little discussion with Commissioner Kavanaugh's committee, just about bringing us up to date, hey, here's what we're working on, here's what we saw out there, and inform us of that information. If that's fair, and Mr. Corey, I want to be fair to you on this, that'd be great. The other option is, and I heard you say a few things, there's a part of me that thinks, why wouldn't we bite the bullet and buy the building? I mean, and look at that, seriously. And, you know, not that we have extra money or anything, but it could be valuable, and it's in the right location for us, totally.
I will tell you this, PJ, I'm in the business, we own property, excuse the language, we're over hell and back, okay? We have property that comes for sale next to us. You know what we do? We buy it. We don't overpay for it, but we buy it. Nobody likes to be landlocked. You're in the real estate business, you do not like to be land, you want to leave your options open, as long as you keep your skin on your back, you know, keep your shirt on your back, you want to keep as many options as you can. This building is for all intent and purposes, not for sale. We've told the developers this, we've been petitioned by probably five developers in the last three years. One of them I had coffee with out in LA here about a month ago, that wants to buy the damn building. Excuse the language, okay? This is a workday for me, and my kids are not around, so I'm, but I'm not saying the building's for sale, but we would, we would look at, we would look at any proposal, that's all.
Thanks.
And I'll leave it go at that.
So, if we could have that few weeks, and then at least let Commissioner Kavanaugh and all of us kind of hear what's going on, and talk to you and Jeff about it a little bit, and set a date, if it can be next week for us to talk, even though we don't have a meeting, then we come back here in two weeks and have this over with.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I guess my question is, how long of a layover is being proposed? I mean, I heard that the committee is meeting at the end of August. August 16, the committee meets, the committee meets? And they would then make a recommendation to the county board? I mean, the committee can't take action on this, only the board can.
No, our committee is traditionally met before the meetings, so we meet at 8:00 a.m. We could put this on the agenda for August 16, and just have the discussion between now and August 16, have a formal committee discussion on August 16 before the board meets. We meet at 8:00, the board meets at 9:00.
And Commissioner Kavanaugh, we could probably meet ahead of that, and then have it at the 16th meeting also. You and I could meet with Jerry and Jeff and get this wrapped up. And then the other thing I want to say to you...
Just a minute, is Commissioner Duda done?
No, I actually, wasn't quite. We don't know that they're willing to wait. Without Mr. Corey's wife present, and I get that, I don't make a move without, I mean, I'm half of a team, I would have the same response you do.
How about a third?
Well, you've got to be ready to lose some one-to-one votes, I get that. We don't know that they're going to wait for us, and what I foresee is, best-case scenario is, the committee meets and says, yes, our staff negotiated a good deal, let's go ahead and move forward and see if they'll still take it. We know they'll take it today. I don't see how we're going to change it, how we're going to improve it, I don't see the point of waiting. I'm fine with changing our policy, going forward and saying, all leases should be brought to our attention before they're up for renewal, if that's how we want to operate, fine, I'm fine with that, but I don't think we start now and hope that Mr. Corey's wife will be patient and understanding with us.
Teresa?
Teresa, you're at County Attorney's Office. I wanted to bring something to the board's attention and clarify something with Mr. Corey, if I may, and I'm looking at the lease on what would be page five, it's paragraph number 19, and there is a right to terminate that the county has, and that might be a good thing, something for the board to consider today on whether it wants to go forward. And I wanted to clarify with you, Mr. Corey, as I read this, it says, "The tenant shall have the right to terminate this lease on or before the first day of any calendar month by giving the landlord written notice at least six months before the date of the tenant's intention to terminate the lease." So, as I read this, we would have, we'd be able to give you six months' written notice that we wanted to terminate, and I wanted to confirm with you that that's how you read it as well.
Yeah, I have not read that part of the lease, and I'll be quite honest with you, I was not aware that it was in there. It sounds like a, basically, what I term boilerplate. I was not aware that it's in there, and I'll be quite honest with you. I'm not sure if I saw that, and it was, I'm not sure I would even go for the lease.
Well, it's reciprocal, you have the same right, and if I may, I'll walk down and present you with a copy and let you take a look at the paragraph.
That's all right, I believe you, I got it right in front of me.
Okay, very good.
Again, I'm more inclined to read a technical report on a air conditioner than I am a lease. And second of all, you folks have wanted to see something earlier than what, in other words, you're caught off-guard by this thing, okay? That's not Jerry and Jeff's fault, that's probably my office's fault for not basically contacting Jerry within the last, maybe nine months ago, and saying, hey, your lease is coming up, we need to sit down and talk. That, Jerry and Jeff contacted me about three or four, five months ago, whatever, and it brought it to my attention. It was, it should have been brought to the attention, you folks' attention, six months to a year ago by our office. Jerry and Jeff should have never had to initiate... Jerry and Jeff should have never had to initiate this.
Going forward with that provision, if the board were to act today, that is in the contract, that right to terminate within six?
If it's in the contract, it's in the contract.
Okay, and you would honor that?
And the fact that I was really not aware of it really doesn't make any difference. We, we, this is the proposal we made to you folks as it's written, and second of all, I'll be honest with you, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference to me if they, if you guys want to move out with a six-month notice or, you know, a couple of months' notice. It's, it's irrelevant. I, it's, we enjoy having you folks there. We appreciate having you guys there. We appreciate your business. But like I said, if this is what the contract reads, this is what it reads.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Corey, you're a gentleman. Appreciate what you've just said. I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and sign with what Teresa's just said. Sign this five-year lease and get it over with today is, I usually do what Commissioner Duda tells me to. He and Boyle are the two leaders. So I'm gonna make that motion and go ahead with this lease. The only thing I'm gonna add to it, if at some point you decide we should have some discussion, Commissioner Kavanaugh could be somewhat in the lead on that with other commissioners, and you decide, you know, it could be the right time to sell it or look at selling it, and we'll look at that idea too because of what you said. We'll see what happens. So I have a motion to go ahead with this lease as it's...
I'll second that.
It's a part of the consent agenda.
Yeah.
So you don't need a separate...
Okay, so we'll...
Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
And I, you know, understand what Commissioner Morgan is saying, and he's got a lot more experience in these matters than I do. It's not so much anything to do with your building, sir. I think it's a fine building. I think you do a good job. I think we're happy there. It's the process for which we spend a million bucks. And a million bucks here, a million bucks there, the old saying is, pretty soon you're talking about a lot of money. And I am kind of particular about the discussions that we have on these matters, and so having no discussion, I think, is not the best practice that we could engage in relative to real estate leases. Having discussion is, and the fact that we've had, had no discussion in the past, I think is absolutely the wrong way to reference this thing. We've done a lot of things in the past that we should probably update and change for better practices, and discussing spending a million dollars on multi-year leases should be one of them. So, I mean, I understand that the lease is on the agenda today, case of first impression for most, if not all of us. I don't think I want to see that happening as a business practice going forward. I don't know any real business that does things that way. I think this is a bad practice, but I'll defer to my more experienced real estate colleague here, and I think that we can move on today. Thank you.
I'm glad we're actually moving on, and I just want to say, you know, we, we have Jerry and Jeff, who we have given the responsibility to for our leases and our buildings. And they did exactly what they were supposed to do. They went out, they looked, they seen what was out there, and came back, we've had this lease for a while, came back with the lease to us. Now, if we want everything to go through a committee first, that's fine, change the policy, but I don't think it's fair to stand, sit here and beat them up on this lease because they did exactly what has been done in the past, right or wrong. It's been done, and they did a good job. They went out, they looked, they spent the last six months, and they brought it to us. That's how things have worked in the past, again, right or wrong, that's how they've worked. If we want to change it, then let's change it. But for now, I think you did a good job. There is, I was going to comment that there is an out clause if, for some reason, we all of a sudden find 15,000 square feet sitting someplace that we want to grab. That doesn't happen in six months. It doesn't happen in a year around here. So I think this is a good move, that we move forward, and I think everything was done appropriately.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I want to echo that, and I, I thought I said a couple of times that this is not a criticism, and it's certainly not a criticism of Mr. Clay or Mr. McGill, and it certainly is not a criticism of the landlord, who's been a terrific partner in this. So I really want to make that clear. This is, in my book, is a decision whether we need to have a policy, are we going to continue to rent? And you, I think you'd be surprised at the eye-popping dollar figure of what we pay annually for rent. And so that's all I want to get out on the table, and if we decide we want to rent, Commissioner Duda made some excellent points about the steps and the ADA and all the rest. We have, all that comes into play. But I really want to make sure that everyone knows that this is not a criticism. I think it was good courtesy, and I think it's a good outcome. So, sorry to give you ulcers for the last hour.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
There is a...
Actually, there was talk of laying over F and amending H, but I don't think we ever got a motion or a second on the...
Okay, so, but is there a motion on the table for the consent?
We did not, we don't have it.
I made the motion.
So I need a motion for the consent with the items of laying over item F until August 2nd and accepting the change in resolution language in item H.
I have some bad news. I want to talk about G for just a minute in general.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, and I'm gonna talk in general. We have a partnership with Sarpy County to run this agency that's the subject of this settlement. I don't see that they contributed to the settlement. The other thing is that, I'll say very briefly, is that we need to clarify our relationship with who I believe is the employer. And that's all that I'll say about this, and I'd like to see that get on somebody's radar. Patrick?
Good. So is there a motion to approve the consent?
Yes.
With laying over item F till August 2nd and the language change in item H?
Yes. I so moved. Second, third.
Okay. Motion by Morgan, second is by Boyle. Please vote.
Forgot to mention the third.
Recognition and proclamations. I don't believe any of the employees are here for these recognitions. I do know that Dan wants to say a few words about item B. Jim Banden, third?
Thanks.
See you later.
Oh, good morning. Dan Ashworth, County Clerk. So I just want to say a few words about Jim. He's been with us for 21 years. Really, two things I remember about Jim, well, many things, but two things that stick out are, he's a very funny guy, and also he was a very helpful guy as well. Jim, basically, anytime he had an opportunity to make a pun or make a smiallic remark, he would take that opportunity. There were many times where I'd go with him with a poorly worded statement or question, and he would make me pay for it, probably every time. For example, yesterday, I was telling him, I meant to get ahold of him on Thursday to let him know that he was gonna be on the agenda, and Friday he was gone. So yesterday I talked to him, and I said, "Well, you know, there's gonna be a resolution recognizing you tomorrow. You're certainly welcome to come up." And he goes, "Do you need an answer from me today?" And I go, "Oh, no, you do, you do whatever you want." And he goes, "Oh, well, in that case, can I go home now?" And so you just do stuff like that. There are some days I remember not being in the mood for it. This was like four or five years ago, when I was, I used to sit right next to Ellen, and one day Jim was, they were working on something together, so he was, he was sitting next to her at her desk, and I had to go to a meeting. So I said something, "I'll go to a meeting, I'll be back." And then, like, the moment I got out the door, I realized I forgot my pen, so I went back to my desk, and as I'm, I mean, it's like 10 seconds later, and Jim's like, "Oh, how was the meeting?" And I'm pretty sure I didn't even acknowledge him. I just walked to the desk and grabbed the pen and left. But most of the time, when Tom Kavanaugh had me put together a lot of charts and graphs, and all, all the accountants would help me out at some point, but mainly Jim was the one I'd go to to get the numbers from and have him check my work, and, you know, the accountants are pretty busy people down there, but he was never a problem. Jim was always happy to help, and I think he was like that with just about everybody, so. Anyway, I'm gonna miss him. He was a good guy to have, and I'm glad we...
Dan?
Oh, here he is. All right.
Sneaking it.
Those are probably all lies. I just wanted to say that, you know, the past 21 years have been great working for the county, you know, under Tom and now Dan. I think the taxpayers should see no difference in the way they're served. And I've always, like I've told everybody I've met, that Dan is not a politician, he's truly a public servant. He does care about the employees in the office and the people of the county, too, so I feel honored to have been part of that office for that long. Thank you.
Well, congratulations on your retirement.
Well, congratulations. Since you're here, I would ask that we have a motion to approve the recognition of this resolution.
So moved.
Second?
And if we could have a vote?
Can I be A and B both resolutions?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention in A that Vicky Pixler from the Health Center is retiring after 24 years, and Robert Buglowitz from the County Engineers after 33 years. So we're actually losing a good number of years of knowledge and expertise in the different areas of county government, but we do wish you the best in your retirement. And so as soon as we vote, I'm gonna ask you to come up because we have a resolution for you.
I got a quick remark here, if I may.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Jim, congratulations. You've done a great job, and Tom always saw it very highly of you, and your, your contribution is appreciated. Thank you for your years of, of service and for the humor that you've added to, to all of our lives.
Well, you've got to laugh, you'll cry.
It's important. It's important.
This is what I'm talking about.
There's also Mr. Buglowitz on the, on the agenda, retiring after 33 years, and I'd like to note his contribution to Douglas County Government. He comes from a storied family of Douglas County public servants. His father actually served on this board, and I've known him since he was a child. He will be greatly missed. His contribution to Douglas County is truly significant, and I'd just like to say, good work and Godspeed, Bugs. Thanks.
Commissioner Boyle?
One little snapshot of history, I think I'm correct on this, but when George Buglowitz, Bob's dad, ran for county board, he had an opponent in the Democratic primary, and there was a fellow who worked in the courthouse, who actually was an aunt to Jan, or excuse me, an uncle to Jan Johnson, Bob Lang. And they tied. And so in the Democratic primary, and I was on the election office, the way to settle that tie was a coin toss. And so the coin was tossed, and somebody called it, and it landed, and whoever it was became the nominee, and it was Buglowitz over Lang. And it was interesting because Mr. Bob Lang worked, continued to work in the courthouse, and it was a wonderful relationship. But I believe, I believe this is the case. I could be wrong, but if it not, it was another county commissioner back in the history, but I think it was Bugs.
Interesting. Okay, please vote.
I already voted. Does he have any party comment, any crack?
Motion passes.
Well, actually, I worked elections for quite a while while you were...
I know that, that's why I asked.
I thought you did a great job. You were streamlining.
Get that on the record. Thank you. Thanks for everything.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Good work there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
A lot of people say that, but maybe you want to be, too, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Next is citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have a presentation by our MAPPA director, Greg Yule, who will be providing an update to our board on the agency activities.
Good morning, commissioners.
How are you?
Very good. Greg Yule, Executive Director with Metropolitan Area Planning Agency. And I'll bring my presentation up here. I saw Commissioner Boyle on my way in this morning, and he said he was looking forward to my five-minute presentation. I think there might have been a hint in there somewhere, so we'll try and keep it brief. First of all, on our community development side, it's been a while since I've been to the board, so I just wanted to update you on some of our activities. MAPPA is leading the South Omaha Brownfields Consortium, and our portion of that project is coming to a close, but you may remember the history of that project. There's some large properties that we were hoping to include as part of that, and several of those were not able to be done through the Brownfields project. We've done assessments on a lot of the smaller properties, and now the focus has turned to the south-side terraces. There's big planning work going on with that next week, and so MAPPA has worked with Metropolitan Community College, City of Omaha, of course, and NRD on moving that forward. We continue our community assistance to, to work on community development projects. So CDVG, working on, with the Department of Economic Development, has what's called leadership communities. And so we're recently successful with Gretna and working with some other communities currently and getting that designation, which gives them additional points when they go to make applications from DED for projects. And particularly the city of Gretna, we're hoping to be successful this coming year on a downtown revitalization project that assists them. I have on here facilitation, visioning, and strategic planning. Recently, just for your information, we worked with Potawatomi County on the waste management site they have in the eastern part of Pot County, and helped facilitate a process there. It's a fairly contentious issue over their, their waste management facility, and have come out with a consensus recommendation. So this is one of the things that MAPPA, some of our newer staff members can really provide, is to work with neighborhood groups or any sorts of organizations to do visioning, planning, and facilitation, so we'll make sure you're aware that we do have that capacity on our staff now. And then the picture of this gentleman here is Chuck Karp. He's our new housing coordinator, and Chuck is recently retired from the Panhandle Area Development District out in Scotts Bluff Garing area, originally from Omaha, and he's retired here. Very happy. We've heard a lot of interest in housing the past few years and trying to administer some of the housing grants. Traditionally, MAPPA has not provided that service, so we are reaching out to communities and having conversations about probably starting, looking at owner-occupied rehabilitation grants. But Chuck has really got a tremendous background, in addition to being the director of the Development District in the Panhandle. He's been a banker, he's done construction projects, so he really has a great bit of experience, and he's interested in looking at, in addition to the owner-occupied rehab, perhaps some outside-the-box solutions to look at a housing project, probably looking to some of the smaller communities to start in, since there's a lot of groups already working on, on housing issues here in Omaha proper. But looking forward to that. Of course, MAPPA helps to administer, along with Mike Sean Law from the GIS Department, on the Nyrock, the aerial photography project. So the 2016 round of that had, those images have been delivered to the jurisdictions in that consortium, and so those are being reviewed right now. And as you see the photo here, this is not just your Google Maps imagery, this is really high-detail imagery that has great value to the assessors, to law enforcement, and has a number of applications. So it's a great example there of collaboration. Next item I have here is MAPPA Chamber Data Hub. When we put out our surveys here, one of the things that we've heard back is a lot of interest in, in data, particularly workforce data. So we're working with the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that we build up this, this data, how they're all working off the same sets of numbers and data that we can use in, in our different activities. MAPPA, we rolled out a new website about six months ago, and pretty excited about that. It has some mapping capabilities and a lot of new opportunities there to show, show data in a more visual and a more user-friendly way. So hoping this partnership will, will make, provide some good data for everybody to use. MAPPA is helping to lead the Little Steps Big Impact program focused on the ground-level ozone issue in the area. So hopefully you've heard some of the ads or heard about this throughout the region. We have a grant through the Nebraska Department of Roads to lead that project. And as you probably have heard, we are pretty close to the threshold of the new ground-level ozone standard, which is 70 parts per billion. Our current value is 67. So we are under that. We have good air quality here, but we have a few days each year where we get close to or exceed that. Thankfully, with our hot days we've had this year, I've heard of no, no violations, but we need to continue to be on top of that because that has huge implications for, for businesses to be able to expand and locate here if we were to ever get in violation of that air quality standard. Also through on here an electric vehicle grant. We've been working with the City of Omaha, a number of the cities around the area, OPPD and others, to submit a grant to the Nebraska Department of Roads for electric vehicle charging infrastructure. This is something that's been done throughout the state of Nebraska, City of Bellevue... One of the obstacles is that people might be interested in it feel like they'll get stuck and they won't have a place to charge up their vehicle. So getting that infrastructure out there. I want to make sure you're aware of a big study we're working on with Nebraska Department of Roads and all the county and city and other local jurisdictions. It's called the Metro Area Travel Improvement Study. Currently, it's in Phase Two and this is a large study to look at our future, not only the state highway system, but all modes of transportation. The Department of Roads, back in 1980s, completed a study that really led to the build-out of the interstate system as we have it today. And so they've pretty much implemented all of the recommendations that were in that study from the 1980s and now they're just essentially doing Band-Aids here and there. And they said, it's time we need to have a more comprehensive look at where we're going from here. So we're tying this in with all of our other planning efforts, but through this, the study, we've gotten more data than we've had before. And right now, the Phase Two is looking at the different alternatives and different strategies for the next 20-plus years. That's an important study to be aware of. And then lastly, I wanted to leave you with Heartland 2050, where that's at. I believe you had with your agenda a list of the different, we call it projects with momentum. So over the past year, the Executive Committee and the various implementation committees around the different topic areas have been working through that action plan to come up with specific activities that they can move forward. And it's been very exciting to see each committee come up with some of their activities. So for instance, economic development, they're looking at a regional site readiness study for industrial sites. One of the things we've heard is even though you think we have so much land in this area, there are not very many sites that are ready to go for industrial development. And when I say industrial, I'm not just talking about old smokestack, but newer cleaner manufacturing that can be a big benefit to the area. Dr. Adi Pour has led up the Health and Safety Committee and we really appreciate her work as a chair of that committee. They had double duty because they had to not only come to the executive committees, but also their own implementation committee. So she's very excited about this trauma-informed care model and taking that region-wide, working through the various county health departments throughout the region. Natural Resources is another area I think has been very successful. They have a number of action steps and for each of those, not only do they have an idea for an action step, but they have someone identified for who's going to take that forward. So you have it there, they are going to move forward with these. The Natural Resources Inventory, that's already been done for Douglas County, but they want to expand that throughout the eight-county region. And then this Local Foods Council that they have gotten together, worked with. Some of the existing groups have been in that area, but they really saw a need for a broader group to come together. So I know Commissioner Rogers has been part of that group and so that, there's a lot of momentum, I think, behind that initiative. And then I have on here a big initiative that we'll be talking about at our summit. Transportation has been kind of the key hot-button topic and concern for our areas. We'll be talking about that extensively here going forward and at the summit. So the, Heartland 2050, we have semi-annual summits and the next one will be August 2nd. We have a national, really a world-known speaker in Jeff Speck coming in, so I hope all of you will help spread the word about that summit. We know that that date is the date of a county board meeting as well as a city council meeting, so we apologize about that timing, but not to fear, we're coming to you. You have that invitation there that we will be doing a luncheon, bringing Jeff Speck to the Jesse Low Room. So you have some very up-close and personal time to hear from him. He really is an expert at helping areas look at how, how can they have the type of area that's going to attract the workforce of the future, that we're going to be able to keep our young people here and have a vibrant community. So I hope to see you all there, I hope that that works out, that we have a quick board meeting and the timing works out, you're able to attend that. And so I appreciate Commissioner Borgston's participation in the Executive Committee and I think that the collaboration is starting already, it's underway and moving forward. So that's all I have for our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Greg. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, Greg, actually, you know, you know what I'd like to see is, I mean, you flew through this, these are good things, it seems like you're doing everything but the windows. What I, what I would like to see is, you know, actually, maybe you've done this somewhere and I haven't attended, if you have, I apologize for that, but what specifically, what have you done for Douglas County lately? I mean, you know, pinpoint it. And when you talk about housing, that concerns me, you know, there's so many, there are a number of private nonprofits, I should say, the number of nonprofits who do a great deal. If you've driven out 20th Street or whatever, out in the north side, it's incredible, you open your eyes and you can't believe where you are. I mean, it's astounding what's happened. And that's Mike Maroney and the Holy Name Housing Corporation and conjunction with NIFA and others and even LISC, the Local Initiative Support Corporation, which is based in New York. There are some tremendous things. I used to be on Holy Name's board and it's just fabulous what they do. And I hope that you link up with some of these people who are already doing it. That'd be really a good thing. And you said a magic word, transportation, which I think in your survey some years ago, transportation, public transportation, not the world of concrete, but public transportation was so close to almost overpassing, building a big ring around, you know, Douglas County, going out to Ogallala and having this big circle going around, you know, so nobody has to bother, nobody has to be bothered driving. I'm so opposed that I can't tell you, I just saw that, I think there was something that's going to start in Lincoln, that they're talking about building a great big ring around Lincoln that'll go into Cass County or something stupid. I mean, I think it's just horrible and I don't think it acknowledges climate change or any of those things that are taking place. We need to have a good, dependable transit system. With all due respect to metro, we don't. And I live in an area, the city, inner-city, where I could take a bus. I tried to take a bus from here one time down to the Old Market and it was supposed to be at 20th, 24th and Harney at 3:15. So I went over across the street at 10, 5, 5 to 3 and stood outside the building waiting for it. It was cold. Stood outside, it never came and then finally, it never did come. And so at a quarter of the four, I started walking and I walked down to the Old Market, didn't kill me, but the bus never came. What the hell happened? So that is a criticism of metro and I think when somebody needs, I've said that to city people, that the city or the county needs to take it over because that, if elected officials ran that, that would not happen. But I hope that metro, or MAPPA rather, really focuses more and more on stable public transportation. Omaha to Lincoln, you know, commuter buses that really work, that come every 10 minutes, you know, that are very inexpensive, subsidize the hell out of them, you know, and get people back and forth to Lincoln, running, starting at 5:00 AM and ending at 8 o'clock at night, every 10 minutes running back and forth. That's what we need and no more concrete for me.
Thank you.
But anyway, and the last thing, and please don't tell you it's a criticism, but Mark figured it out. The date of the lunch isn't on here. It's just the RSVP, but he figured out that it's August 2nd. Right?
That's correct.
Okay, good deal.
Tuesday, August 2nd.
We'll be there and I'll fast.
How is it?
Thanks, thanks, Greg.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I want to thank Greg for sharing with us. We, the Board of MAPPA, have asked Greg to be a little more out-front and visible to all five counties that are a part of MAPPA to make sure that we're all a little more up to speed with what MAPPA's got going on because we so often don't know. They do such a variety of services. Our new housing director, I appreciate your putting that up as the token old guy at MAPPA. There's been quite a turnover of staff down there. Greg was written up recently in the Midlands Business Journal as one of Omaha's under-40 outstanding leaders and rightly so. But the whole staff at MAPPA pretty much has had a lot of turnover lately. It's a bunch of kids down there and they're very good at what they do. I'm real impressed with the quality of the staff that we have and the work product that they are turning out. And when these guys tell me that this is what millennials want to see in a community, they've got some credibility with me. I will listen. I don't know what the young people want and so I'm glad that we have a staff that is more in touch and I appreciate your coming out and sharing with us what all MAPPA's got going on.
Thank you very much. We have truly an excellent staff right now. I'm not just saying that, we have a great level of cohesion. We had our first staff retreat in June that we've had in years and years, as long as since I've been there and so it's really a joy working there right now.
Good bunch of kids.
Thank you, Greg. No other lights? Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you. Keep it up. We like hearing from you.
We do have a public hearing. The public hearing is on a resolution to approve a financing by Hospital Authority Number Two of Douglas County, Nebraska, for the Nebraska Medical Center, DBA Nebraska Medicine, in the amount not to exceed $170 million. And we can take action on this after the public hearing. So this is the public hearing. Hello?
Good morning. I'm Dawn Rock with the law firm of Q-Tech Rock, 1650 Farnham Street. And we're here for the purpose of the public meeting to discuss the potential bond issuance by Hospital Authority Number Two for the benefit of the Nebraska Medical Center, doing business as Nebraska Medicine. This hearing is just to satisfy the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code, Section 147-F. The county is in no way obligated on these bonds. These are revenue bonds of the Hospital Authority Number Two that will be payable solely from the revenues pledged under the trust signature. I would be happy to introduce Linda Schulting, who is the Controller for Nebraska Medicine, to answer any questions that you have on the projects that will be financed by the proceeds of the bonds.
Okay. Are there any questions? Anyone wishing to speak for, or Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Tell me a little bit about the use of these funds. So we're authorizing like, I guess, a line of credit to issue bonds in that amount?
What will happen is there is a loan agreement that will be entered into between the Hospital Authority Number Two and the Nebraska Medical Center. These bonds are going to be used for a variety of purposes. A portion of the bonds will be used for new money that will, that will go to improve facilities that are, that the Nebraska Medicine currently has and a portion of the proceeds will be used to refinance some of the, some of the specific improvements at Nebraska Medicine. And Linda, maybe you can speak a little more to those.
Yes, included in the funds is a designated amount for the Lordson Outpatient Center that's being built, right off of 40th and Saddle Creek. In addition, there is a Village Point Expansion Project, which includes an ambulatory surgery center. Part of that is already open and the rest will open in the fall. There are also some improvements that have been made in the Women's Service Center already at Nebraska Medicine and a parking garage. Those are all new funds. They total about $112 million and then the rest of the bonds would be used for refinancing existing debt at a lower interest rate.
So the entire $170 million authorization is dedicated to current, ongoing or new projects, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And I don't know if we received with our documentation here a list of those projects that you just outlined?
I think that they're listed in the preliminary offering statements in the back.
They are listed in the resolution. They aren't defined as specifically in the resolution as they will be in the offering document that's available to investors of the bonds.
I see. Yes, they're listed without dollar amounts in the resolution.
Right, the resolution just is, will say the aggregate amount, which will not, the bond proceeds will not exceed the amount of $170 million. It doesn't go as so far as to earmark the specific amounts for each project, but we do have estimates of those available if you're interested.
Yes, could you supply us with copies of those, please?
Sure.
And if this authorization goes forward today, then what's the timeline on the bond issue?
The preliminary statement will go out next week is the planned timeframe, or will be printed next week, I should say. And then the bonds would actually be priced and put out in the market in August, with the closing expected by the 23rd of August.
23rd of August, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I have to tell you this, that I'm not asking, I'm not actually saying this. My wife is funneling this comment through me, but what a pleasure it is to see two women handling this issue.
Thank you.
It really is, it's cool. A lot of times, we always see these guys in suits. So congratulations and I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's what Ann said. Ann told me. I got her message.
With that, is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Duda, seconded by, no, motion by Boyle, seconded by Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have one item under Child and Youth Services as a resolution approving the agreement with the State of Nebraska Administrative Office of Probation for probation to provide the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Data Coordinator for Douglas County in the amount of $58,380 and these are grant funds. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, seconded by Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Next is, we need executive session for union negotiations and litigation.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Boyle, seconded by Rogers. Please vote.
We didn't do the personnel report or anything. Did you mean to skip that or was that accidental?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just as presented.
Okay.
Sorry.
Now, that's the problem.
I did skip it.
I always look at it.
I know, I skipped it. Sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry. Next is, we need executive session for union negotiations and litigation.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Boyle, seconded by Rogers. Please vote.
We didn't do the personnel report or anything. Did you mean to skip that, or was that accidental?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just as presented.
Okay.
Sorry.
Now, that's the problem.
I did skip it.
I always look at it.
I know.
Motion passes.
I skipped it, sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry.
Where did it appear?
It should have been on page two. We fixed it online. Written a correction on line right away and then in the paper.
Yeah, you want to go? Okay, I'll give you a ride. Anybody else want to go jail?
Motion passes. Oh, thank you so much. I do have.